Good morning to one and a half percent here. Uh, in the Kinaama session now the idea and I print part one. Namah early morning study group start pani about three hundred days. So that celebrate panel video ma da. Namah in the weekly full last pressure session wanted to contact money to run. Uh, then namah EMS pathi solanunna. Orin de pair naala modella oru adadi early morning enter it. Uh, we discuss pani avangalukula explain pani padikalana thodanga patta oru group. First still discuss pani kanga, uh, that the call moolama. Then that was a watch a group by in the Kivandita. Or a above two hundred members here kara oru group passail betta varadu. So, ena brina, ipu kaaleela nanga CPC classes poeetrak. Then, uh, weekend la vandita recent judgment vandita discuss pannu. Evening porutha varaku Praveenamamoda Evidence Act class poeetrak. Then, uh, special sessions edela contact mandranga. Okay, in the K, namah class start pandra kunnadi. Namah Munish sir, welcome address kudathruvanga. Then, ungalikka classes, uh, saar narathum bothe edhal doubts edukuna, that note pani vetchukunga. So lasta namo vanditto ten minutes adhukaaga, namo odhukala. So appo vanditto, you hand raise pannenga, over ala kuuppari. So then, padin, you ngada doubt a clear pannikunga. The notes seedukalakaana, allame readya vetchukunga. Uh, Munish sir, welcome address code start pannings.
Okay, good, thank you ma'am. Anayurku manakkam. Balan sir, manakas.
Manakkam.
Na veli irukkara, naal video vaata appanikara sir.
Okay.
So, uh, Balan Sarapati oru chinnai intro kudithukira. Oru rendu spot naadithukira. Ena brina, the janori maasa naanu vinod sir vandu Karnataka la oru paichu bainno. Andha paichu vandu rennal ransh, andha rennal paichu muddijakapro, asushala Monday classes start pandrathu. Enga Karnataka High Court ponnu solte, High Court vannu. Vandhakapro, pastu vandu engal kundu personal High Court ponnunne. Uh, High Court pakkunnu, anga pidi irukkunnu, adhalam pakkunna laa, Ilaa, asala, Karnataka High Court. Naav ponnunne saaro de para suli keegiru. Saara pakkunnu, odi solte Karnataka High Court la payachi, poi saar para keegiru. Balan, enna balan, ading keegiranga. Anu marie, sari, epdisolana, takkun, YouTube, YouTube adutthu saar nareyepesiriranga. Tamilnadalikka nareyeporadalakka vandu pesiriranaala. Andha video adutthi katti, indha balan sarap pakkunnu vannu. Avang pastu sonnade, singham. Abriya, adi suli, Tamil la suli sonnaga. Agapro, amma, adi sonnaga, pro, avur angaruparay, amsonli suli, sonnaga. Appro, saara teedi andharathu, ippi patha, anga saar illa. Agapro, High Court pakkutti, naanga andutto. Indha moment vandu veli vandu naanu, annanu okkandu pesambo, engal kenno uruno anduchu. Brina, avu, vastu ishiyo, avu manasu fulla me vandu oru, 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 oru icon. Saar para sonnunne, oru icon vandhu, andha icon, enga rindu anduchu, abidinrathu, sheethengal, remba priya thakathu uraguchu. Adi innu saara teedanu, saaramanu, namu irukunnu, vahela pochchu. Idaya, inga kodittukattu na, in the K, valakkaringirulal vandu pathingina, orutarora urimika, kural kudukranga. Peshiranga, ellame pandranga. Avadi pandra valakkaringirul malay, vandu, in the K, enna, valakala, apaadu. Poopapondra, peruburu valakkakal, adathu, sapta, naatuke, idhara, throwmantra, oru, oru, kuchavali marie kodittukattu ra. Adada, in the K, pathingina, madriyvalakkaringa, Abash Yusuf, naivangal laa, pathingina, ennae laa poranga. Yeh poranga, brina, Balvir Singh, abidin sordra, oru IPS adiyari, vandu, uh, oru, illickala, oru vishyam pandraru. Adhukaaga, urimikaaga, ithukaaga, kuda poradumuladu, andha valakkaringirul malaa, vandu, oru valakkupayidu. Apa, mukka mulukka, poradhirinra, ellava, valakkaringiru, edhuthu, kudurukulathu, padinandha, naamande, nee dadu pandra, prakani pandrum. Idha asushala, namu valakkaringila pandrathu. Adha taandi, saar enna pandranga, brina, valakkakootla, pidi, nademire pandranga. Abadi panna, pala valakkakal, Tamilnadal, nareyep approach pani irukkum, nareyavallakkal. Uh, saar vandha, adha velipadayavi, vandu, edukpandranga, epdi pandranga, brina, oru service. Thaankattukkata, tholi la, makalka, bainpaduthranga. Apa, andha bainpaduthumbuladu, da, veerpaduthu, ena ellarmee, oru, sattaputthanal tham padikiru. Oru, nee matrathal tham practice pandrum. Apri, epdi irukmo, epdi differenta, saar muttu, veerparrara, brina, saar, inthukrathla, kara, veerparraru. Idha than thiruloru, kural la surla, oppuravu arizal. Adathu, ottha arivan, weevan, machyan, setturul, vaykapadum. Indha kural, vilakkamay, enna, brina, indha kural, definition poturvanga, the oppur, ital, potada, in the bracket la poturvanga. Adhuk, enna arta, brina, podumakalka, udavi seidu, waldal. Podumakalka, udavi seidu, waldal, abidina, edho, vandu, orutara, saapadukka, keegirare, namo oru ala, saapadukkara. Orutan, kila ulundhranga, pitni kila, idhala, help, oru udavi. Ana, oru society pandrum la, oru sirupanmi, makalka, sordra, yeha, patta, vishyingle, narakuthu. Apa, adha, adha, asushala, kadangi, bhaiga. Ma, avangalora urimikaaga, poranirge, andha oru gunan, da, namada, pirichukattu. Abadi pirichukattu, naala, naani, Balan sir, vandu, namakumaunadi, iranga. Andha vahela, idh edho, saara, welcome mandraku, saara, pathi, illa, saar, sanjashingala, pesharashingala. In the K, idha keekkara EMS, saandu, oripinarala, kuttu, in the K, pudusa, yeha, patta, valakkaringil, vandirupengia. Saara, followpandra, advocates, vandirupengia. So, idh ellame, enana, saathu, namu, enna, kattukkuttom, abidinrathu, oru sheetha, padipunnu, abidinrathu, kaga, da. Idha, naalaki, sonna, maybe, namalu, idhamaari, vandu, samuthathooda, ondri. Namurka, society, keerprara, prachinigala, namodha, pangalipirukunnu, yeh, abidina, namala, social doctors. Oru doctor, oru, urnoyala, kundapaduthu, ana, namu, oru, samuthrulla, oru, seerana, illa, mosamana, powidhiya, aruvisichchamolamol, idha, pani. The society, well, developpadu, society, maathaparoo. So, andha vahela, saara, welcome pani, varakiru, early, early, money, study group, sarva, welcome, ni, varakil, naa, pramidham parra. Thank you, sir. Uh, remba, sandosama, arukuthu, brina, epdisolana, thirillig, sir, thank you, sir, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Naan start pandumaa?
Ha, start panna, sir.
So, anayurku, manakkam. In the K, topic, art of cross examination. So, whether it is art of cross examination or skill of cross examination. So, cross examination is a skill, more than an art. The, the point is whether the skill is for sell or skill is for tell. Eppandha, cross examination, ninga YouTube la poni, na, nariya, pair, pesiriranga. Nariya, section one thirty seven examination in chief, one thirty eight cross examination, reexamination. Relevancy of fact, risk, a state, section six of the evidence act, seven, eight, approach test identification, parade, section nine. Then twenty six, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six. So, any statement or confession made before the police is it by section twenty five and twenty six. Section twenty seven of the evidence side, it partially lifts the ban to the extent of recovery. Apro, and the dying declaration. Section fifty nine and sixty of evidence act. Section fifty nine, sixty, the, the, the evidence must be direct. About documentary evidence in our section sixty one to sixty five, sixty five A. Then sixty five B comes, if it's a digital evidence. Uh, dear forty five, opinion of the expert, forty five A. See, hundred and five, hundred and six of the evidence side, idh ellame, section, la, ottu, ellaram, gudup, peshiranga. Oh, what is the cross examination, or epdi nartheru, abidina, enna, keetingina? Idh, in the, man, vetay, maridha, cross examination, man, vandu, very fast animal. Remba, fasta, singha, siruthai, idh, idh, vada, fasta, oodakuriyavu, animal, uh, man. Apa, man, enna, pannu, anena, adha, tattitatti, oru, muttichandil, nikke, vechi, takkun, echshuva. Apa, witness, akuda, oodavutto, oru, ettila, bear, vayayala, the, niruthi, takkun, question, botto, answer, vayingino. So, it is like, uh, a dear hunting, abidina, ennu de, personal experience, la, kudus, olrunna, naa. Apa, witness, abidina, witness, box, kuvanduta, see, witness, number, uh, pre, eyewitness. Circumstantial witness, punch witness, master witness, circumstantial witness. Kannala, kanda, saachi, solla, kuriyav witness, DNA expert, ballistic expert. Digital expert, bomb expert, PCB expert, then investigating officer, police. Marie, pulverivitham, ana, witness, la, vandu, box, kovroanga. Apo, the advocate, anan, naam. Idhu, vandu, oru, single man army, tani, tanimanida, oru, army, idh, single man army. Apo, oru, periyasystema, namu, kederupan, nikhu, oru, sambavan, narandhurukku. Anga, recovery, irukku, oru, dead body, irukku, illa, bomb, explosive material, irukku, illa, pistol, irukku, revolver, irukku, gun, irukku. Sword, irukku, knife, irukku, adhumaala, rattha, irukku, bullet, irukku, cartridge, irukku. Uh, DNA evidence, irukku, so, idhu, vandu, oru, perit team. Adhathuk, expert, medical expert, adhathuk, expert. Final, most of the time, in the mar, sensational cases, in the, special public prosecutor, panga. And he is assisted by band of policeman. Uh, anga DSP, iruppari, illana, DSP, adairankla, ACP, iruppari, inspector, paru, police, irupanga. So, this is a team, between a team and an individual, andhamaari, anna, oru situation. Apa, witness, box, la, vanditto, pru, eh, it is a game of boxing. Knockout shot, avanga, namla, achchi, taliranga, illa, namba, knockout pandrum, it's all brainstorming session. Testing the veracity of the witnesses. Adhu, vandu, remba, spontaneous, ayirugunnu. Eppor, sambavan, narakuthu, dinuvichikla. Sambavan, narandhutu, oru, blast case, illa, la, gunshot case, or stabbing case. Marie, heinous, appan, sinna, death or life imprisonment, vandhuthu, kolayoda, samandhappattu, illana, bomb blast, vada, samandhappattu. Idh, vandu, sentence, death sentence, varika, irukku. Apo, oru, FIR, register, avu. FIR, mugal, mudal, tagaval, arikaya, samarbikkara, vur, yahre, register, pandrava, vur, yahre. Adha, vandu, station, g, andha, kut, uh, FIR, edutthu, porava, vur, yahre, in the time gap. Adha, aanap, prugai, immediate, as part, kuppuranga. Apo, punchanama, shruva, avu, the punchanama is not defined in criminal procedure code, or IPC, or evidence act, punchanama. Punch, abidina, ayindu, ayindu, saachiyangal, punchanama, nama, anna, document. Saachigal, uriyav, document, da, punchanama, illana, parvay, master. Apo, recovery, master, recovery, punchanama. Apo, dead body, meela, vandu, inquest, punchanama. Arrest, aanap, prugai, arrest memo, adha, arrest, punchanama, arrest, documentation, pandrathu. Apro, avur, uriyav, walk, moolam, statement of the accused. Statement, base, pani, recovery. Apo, in the dead body, vandu, aspatrikan, puvanga, adhala, gunshot, vinge, in, irinchna, doctor, adhala, irukra, bullet. Andha shirt, andha hole, idh, allam, vandu, x-ray, edukunnu. Photography, pandu, adha, pani, vandu, ballistic expert, kan, puvanga. Illa, katiila, la, thakka, pattruntha, adhuk, do, doctor, k, in the weapon, ala, in the injury, narakma, anu, pa, pa, oru, expert, opinion, oru. Andha weapon, meela, rattham, irunda, indha rattha, enna, group. Uh, irandu, ponnavu, uriyav, rattha, enna, group. Eppala, vandu, DNA, vanduchu, catch DNA, weapon, attack, pannava, cells, adhala, DNA, profile, buynindru. Apo, DNA, vandu, it's a very big science, DNA. Ah, DNA, la, vandu, andha blood, apro, andha accused, yahre, kanga, avur, uriyav, blend, rendithu, match, pannai. Apa, adhu, vandu, connecting material, DNA. Ballistic is connecting material for a gun. Adha, madri, bomb explosion, abidinrindha, printed circuit board, adhuri, expert. It's all science. Apo, evidence, cross examination, vandhu, the, it's a science, it's not an art, it is a science. Science, abidin, varumbodhi, it is a research. So, learning science. And, learning, uh, science, through a research. Apa, DNA expert, adhukaaga, vayavu, biotechnology, allam, padichinariyo, patthangal, vangi, PhD, la, vangi, andha, DNA, la, avur, expert, oru, varu. We did only law, but we should may, do a research and learn what DNA is. Then finger print expert. Eppo, pathingina, ellarkailime, mobile, irukku. Mobile, eppu, naanga, okkandu, vikkena, ennu de, location, net, teri, longitude, latitude. Kutram, narandhavu, oru, adathu, la, tower, dump. Andha device, vandu, kundupotanga, la, indha, tower, dump, andha, kuruputta, time, la, yattana, mobile, number, irukkunnu, kamsikuttru. Apa, particular, mobile, yanga, irunna, anu, latitude, longitude, andh, yerpudati, katti, kuttru. Apa, digital evidence. Eppa CCTV cameras, ellar, veetli, up, nirvanathla, publicla, ellar, athli, CCTV footages. Eppala, ke, oru, 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 kolay, narakuthu, abidina, entire, avu, avanga, varruthu, katiya, kundu, varruthu, illa, thupaike, kundu, varruthu, fire, pandruthu. Chase, pandruthu, idhu, puravu, CCTV la, record, avu. Illana, ellarkailime, mobile, irukku, mobile, irundha, camera, irukka, adha, abdiya, record, pandranga. So, video recording. Then CCTV recording. Apo, dear, the, channel, deformation case, v, the YouTube channels. Then, information, Google. Apa, Google, in, varumbodhi, adharu, urdi, IP address, enna. Yeah, andha IP address, vandu, staticka, dynamica. So, each mobile is connected to internet. Apa, internetla, enna, messaging, varanla. Twitter, akuntla, vandhu, Google, akuntla, vandhu, YouTube, la, vandhu, clubhouse, la, vandhu. Adhanali, one, one, no, saachiyangal, da. So, digital evidence. Adhala, poodava, number, vayakarinderukal, adhala, uh, expert, vannu, ah, way. The cross examination, enbadu, birum, kalayala. Cross examination, enbadu, oru, tiramai, skill. So, how to acquire the skill? Abidin, nila, number, ellad, medical, skill. Avu, odambla, vandu, indha, adathu, la, adipatta, enna, ago, yavlo, narathla, enna, change, ago, rigarmati, seppo, present, ago. Adhala, thupaike, la, shoot, pannaga, entry wound, measurement, yavlo, exit wound, irukka, illia. So, medical, taro. YouTube, otti, taro, knowledge, digital evidence, otti, taro, knowledge, CDR. Idhu, otti, taro, knowledge. Adhanali, oru, branch of science, which is precedent to service by the investigating agency. All to connect to the accused with the crime. Apa, namu, vandu, adha, vandu, disconnect, pandu, how to disconnect? The, the, the role of best investigator is to connect. Connect with science. Connect the incident with the accused. Connect with the circumstance with the accused. Connect CDR with the accused, connect CAF with the accused, connect DNA with the accused, connect. IP address with the accused. Connect the sequence with the accused. Connect with the presence of accused at the spot, connect with the present of witnesses at the spot. Connect the sources of weapons used to commit the offense. Connectivity, this is the role of a investigating officer. And investigating officer gets free of costs, at the cost of the state. Every expert, he gets, and we have departments for that. Police department as fingerprint expert, police department as forensic expert. Well, state as digital expert, yella expert, all paid by the state. The best brains are available with the state. So, investigating officer need not crack his head, everything he can get through the expert. He has all the infrastructure and material to collect. So, about the defense cross examination. Equally, we should be fully acquainted, fully connected with all these signs. We should know how to handle each and every expert. So, idhu, vandu, research work. Not only reading and understanding the position of law, procedure code, definition of the offense. Then, the evidence act. It also requires research on various other sciences, various other signs. So, which the prosecution precedent to service to connect. Apa, how to disconnect? Eppa, then, na, na, the, the, the defense advocate, a role. See, amma, oru, fact, in, kundu, vannu, fact and fiction. So, defense advocate, he should have a skill to, to convert a fact into a fiction. Your fiction into your fact. And, epdi, pandrathu, panna, da. Otherwise, we will lose the case. Fact into your fiction, fiction into your fact. How to convert? See, prosecution, fact, in, kundu, vikra. And we should see that the fact is fiction. Andh, the fiction, enna, other than, so, na, it is like a boxing. Our factor, kundu, vikra, you should make that is a fiction. Your defense, is, your, your defense, you should make as a fact. Fact to become a fiction, fiction become a fact. Unmai, poi, avu, poi, unmai, avu. So, the effective cross examination, the skill of cross examination, art of cross examination, out of complete research. So, research of a case. Eppu, idhu, solumbodhi, there is a big challenge to the criminal trial lawyers, nobody, because. The fascism, the fascist state. Uh, see, they, they learnt from American imperialism of, uh, predictive policing algorithm. Moon, kanipu, police algorithm. Indha, warthaya, vandu, nam, purunjukavendhi, adhu, migamiga, avasya. Oru, sambavan, narakumbodhi, in the, in the, pulan, misanana, sayyakuriyav, police. Police, abidinumbodhi, investigating agency, Tamilnadal, CBC, ID, irukkala, Karnataka, la, CID, irukkala, CBI, investigating agency. Now, they have brought to NIA National Investigating Agency Act. That is a investigating of terror related cases. So, this is called, the specialized agency press this predictive policing algorithm. Abidina, oru, sambavan, narandhuthu, predict, pannirappa. Er, ndaithi, ethla, uh, Mecca, Madinah, abidinrathu, ayidrabathla, oru, gunduvadi, punnagandhuthu. Gunduvadi, puy, enga, vellikam, maasi, idhi, moodindhu, ellar, varumbodhi, bomb, vaykapattu. Andha bomb, la, vedichu, kitta, tatta, oru, eerothu, pair, setthupaitanga. Oru, patthayruthu, adhigamana, Islamiyargal, anga, seyandhrundanga, avu protest, pandumbodhi, police firing, la, patthu, pair, setthupananga. Adhu, narandhuthu, udene, kaanikappattu, Indian, moja, idhin, idha, panna, lash, avunakal, lashkar, i, toy, ba, vada, connection, irundhu. Kitta, tatta, erunuru, Islamiyargal, kaydu, sayyappattargal. Avu, meela, kutrapathrika, yam, thakal, pannitanga, andha, investigate, pani, kutrapathrika, charge, it, samarpit, police, kargal, vandu, medal, kuda, kuddanga. Kadasiyaga, terindhu, the, andha, bomb, vedipu, andha, uh, andha, sambavat, ei, narathyadu, uh, Asimalan, daavum, avur, uriyav, kuvu, um, Abinav, Anand. Enna, endru, sollakuriyav, oru, fringe, organization, da, adha, pannanga, anu, terindhu. Adha, marie, pathingina, na, ninga, Samjukta Express, adhu, Delhi, la, irundhu, Lahur, porakuriyav, oru, train, andh, train, la, gunduvadi, punnagandhuthu. Narandhuprugai, see, predictive policing algorithm, idha, Islamiyargal, saythargal. The, irandhavargalum, Islamiyargal. Kaydu, sayyappattavargalum, Islamiyargal, investigation, pani, charge, it, pottanga, kadasiyaa, terindhu, the, indha, Abinav, Anand, abidinrathu, ramai, puda, andha, gunduvadi, puy, negashia, narathlange. Idha, marie, Ajmir, Bali, uh, bomb blast, Malegan, bomb blast, indha, madriyana, neevagal, vugal, narandhuthu. Apo, idhla, ellame, scientific evidence, kundu, varanga. Apo, naan, narathunna, oru, case, mar, nariyakees, la, pathirukka, how the evidences, saachiyangalai, vandu, epdi, manufacture, pandranga. So, I use the word manufacture instead of fabrication. So, adhu, urupati, fabrication, na, poru, la, vandu, inakiru, the, manufacture, na, mattamava, urupati, pandruthu. See, how they manufacture materials against innocence? Idha, vandu, namu, arindukolvadu, migamiga, avasyama, irukku. Eppa, pahad, abidinrathu, oru, Malyalam, pressakuriyav, oru, Islamiyar, avu, appa, athla, thivutti, one, la, Kerala, lindhu, Pakistan, poy, vada, anga, poi, kalyanam, pannigirave, andha, kalyanathla, porundha, oru, pay, na, pahad. Avur, vandu, AMC chemistry, padigirave, Lahur University, la. Avu, eerothi, erundi, eerothi, mois, paya, first graduation, muddistaprugai, avur, de, roots, Kerala, la, Kerala, la, varumbodhi, oru, ponno, da, avur, k, kadal, vaya, padrave, apru, vandu, andha, kadal, kaka, India, v, vutta, oru, poru, dhu, k, urupamilla. Uh, madrasla, vandu, edhna, bivabharan, sealan, documentation, panna, pakrave, mudila, apru, oru, relative, mulima, maysiruk, porave, andha, anga, relation, kada. Apro, driving license, in the mar, document, allam, vandu, avu, earpathikirave, idhu, epriyo, vandu, hmm, administration, k, terinju, ponnathu. Oru, arrest, pannaprugai, patta, oru, Islamiyar, anna, Pakistan, a, seyandhava. Apa, oru, drama, drama, na, na, oru, night, oru, hero, pokk, vandila, ponnam, madriyav, oru, kaila, AK, party, sound, rifle, irundha, madri, oru, pinala, oru, villain, rider. Avur, kaila, vandu, thupaki, irundhu, thupaki, sandan, narandhuthu, andh, sandilai, avu, kaydu, sayal, patta, argal, na, idh, ellame, drama. Idhu, punayappattu, vage, it's a manufactured case. Indha case, la, vandu, ninga, pathingina, mudal, tagaval, arikaya, irukku, police, kargal, la, mugal, mudal, tagaval, arikaya, porranga. AK forty seven, recovery, pandranga, adhuk, recovery, punch witness, irukranga. Thupaki, fire, pannadu, k, andha, police, ponnav, vaganathla, andh, hole, irukku. Apro, avu, veet, poi, avu, uriyav, walk, moolathu, pettu, avu, veetuk, ponnaga, anga, vedi, poruligal, kadi, kudhu, idh, ellame, planted. Adukku, avur, k, samandhami, illa. But, kaydu, pani, final, report, porranga, idhu, vandu, visarnap, pandhu, the, uh, DYSB, ranking, official, la, ellav, officers, mem, paranga. So, how to handle this case? Idhu, effective, cross examination, irukkavendhi, adhu, avasya. Na, apur, reasonda, Delhi, High Court, la, poi, oru, case, cross examination, panna. Uh, Delhi, la, cross examination, aachi, adha, marie, Mumbai, la, aachi, Chennai, la, kuda, aachi, Bengaluru, la, aachi. Ellayadathli, vandu, adhu, tribunal, sitting judge of the High Court. Avur, da, vandu, adhu, uriyav, presiding officer, prosecuting officer, yar, anu, pathingina, additional solicitor general of India, with him. Two senior designated seniors practicing in the Supreme Court and a band of lawyers consisting of about fifteen full infrastructure. So, with that, they come, abas, Chennai, vandanga, la, Chennai, la, irukka, kuriyav, senior, most state level, public prosecutors, government pleaders, ivangala, avulodu, nor, batch. So, the defense lawyer and who should lead? If it's a little, it's infrastructure, adha, enna, avudunna? Irundu, Islamiyargal, avu, vandu, Malyalam, pressru, nga. Physical education teachers, avu, nga. Enga, poranga, na, partner, porranga. Partner, la, poi, adh, in the, avunlu, de, amai, p, seyandhavargal, k, indha, physical, exercise, kattukudukranga. Adha, muddistu, avu, partner, lindhu, train, eri, kochikuparaparanga, adhu, lakno, uttarpradeshla, entrai, lakno, meela, da, ponnu. The police, enna, pandranga, na, andha, train, a, nirtranga, niruthi, avul, kaydu, seyraga. Yertin, poi, avu, la, tashin, la, vechi, rendu, maasam, torture, pani, avu, gittu, vandu, oru, pistol, revolver, explosives, allah, recovery, pandram, madri, case, pordu, vanga. So, idh, allam, kuda, pathingina, na, ninga, idhu, enna, eh? Investigating agency, idhu, uriyav, sattam, abidin, pathingina, unloful, activities, prevention, act. Apo, adhala, two K terrorist act, terrorist gang, terrorist organization, terrorist organization. Declared as terrorist organization under section three of the UAP act. Listed as per section thirty five of the UAP act. Al, vandu, UAP act, to, enna, ya, court, la, visaranik, vandha. That, enna, ya, court, is the Supreme Court, no revision, no four eighty two, no red petition, no appeal.
Mmm, apo nine M M, nine M M na adu vandu uh police ko use panra gundu bullet, nine M M uh bullets vandu public kadiyadu. Apo iraichina andu shoot panni entry wound. Entry woundu orinchi irukku, orinchi na uh ten M M. Entry wound. Oru uh oru centimeter irukku, ten M M. Ten M M entry wound na medical evidences. This is a very many medical evidence, ballistic. Sharma, Sharma, Patte, abhinra, one expert, uh Dimayo. This is all vandu uh ballistic expert books. Apo enna prove pannan na? The bullet which entered into the body of the victim is ten M M bullet. Uh ten eleven M M ya na, the entry wound should be smaller than the uh size of the bullet. This is a lot of questions. Skid mark, revolver, aprong cartridges, bullet measurement, entry, malerndes. Volumes of question, two days crap full. About ten hours cross examination of your ballistic expert. Ultimately, it was destroyed in the court. It's all sheer individual effort. The skill of cross examination, it was demonstrated that the revolver recovered, the bullet recovered was not the weapon used to commit this weapon because that measurement is different from the the entry wound. Apo adu skid mark no or or parked what you on defense lawyer uh Taya Ravan. See, this is finally I got an accutor. This is the fully contest case. That prosecution prosecutor almost wept. He said, what is this? Hundred percent case became a failure case. This solely because of uh ballan. Andamadriyana oru vishya vandu de. So this is how each case has to be examined. Adhe madri uh serial bomb blast case. Serious bomb blast case, the Ivo was cross examined by me for about seven months. Yeah, maasav todernu cross examination. Ivo. Apo each and every point, ethanakalirka, yella kalayum thirumbi vekkino, no stone should be left unturned. No stone shall be left unturned. Apo ethanakalirukkude, yar yar endandu kalvechanga andruthu vandu, we should thoroughly make research on that. And each and every stone needs to be turned. So adu inno trial erukke, argument stages la poiitukke. Adhe madri uh age the Bengaluru lindu oru naapathu kilometer doorthila Anakalindu oru urukku, andu urla uh so edhurutukka edhurutukka varappu tagarala. Apo edhurutla erukkuro oru oru arudhu vaisiruka, oru pasangala well settled in government department, anji pasangal, anji peram government officials. Ioruka oruka tagaralaavudhe, oru veetlindu rendu veedavukulke, oraya varisilai irukkara, rendu veedu. Oru porar, ivanthe veetlindu veliyavandu muscle loading gun, load panni shoot pannra. Adu correcta mudugala backla patte heart ule entrai exit woundu aartthalachikina veliyavandhrudhe, ida vandu oru dia wife. Ouru dia rendu daughters. Avuk vandu tunithoichitupanga, veet edhurla, andu uringilla peri peri veedu irukka, veliyada vandu tunithoiipanga, pathrathakaguvanga, andu mariaadhitula irukkanga, avuk payya vandu oru nooradi doorthila ninittupesiitukkara, urlagaruvchananga oru anjarperi, this is all my eyewitness case. Shoot pannitutu odipoyirra, odipunudhu, ona arrest panni, ona malak putrapathrikal thakal pannkanga, avun jailipoyita. So in the case, engittuvadu. This is very, very tough case, na na andu urukku poiipathu, angal angala photo duttvandhira. In the special public prosecutor appoint pannkanga, yarana oru dia pasangiala may vandu they were in a very good government positions, all may official arkanga. They engaged a prominent advocate as a special public prosecutor. The witness akankala pakvamdiyadu, witness a complete art train panni. And the witness akondu vandu boxla irukmodha bakumidiyam. One sixty one statement oh. Court le solra saachi testimony. Rendu comma pull stop or update, actually narundu, actually pathu, adhe marie uh one sixty one statement. Uh adhe madri court la vandu apdya solranga, it's all very, very, very natural witness. And there are six eyewitnesses who have actually witnessed their incident. But na tha cross examination panna, idu pannadu vandu oru uh padanju vashtukumunna, I got an accutor. I got an accutor, who entire jail was stunned. Ava the conviction annikid, tuniala ready paniita. Naali lindu convict poora tunia number ponnana, tuni guddatachitru ready arka, mentally he was prepared. Court is going to convict. I am going to be here as a convict prisoner. I would indra mudiukvandhuta, but that day uh he was set at liberty. The evdipaniirukmudi, eyewitness, that is the brilliancy. Apo the cross examination pannumbodhe the uh quality of a defense lawyer, we should gauge. Vanda witness, unmayana witness, ah illa vandu uh whether he is a got up witness, got up by the the investigating agency. Apo unmayana utna witnessirunda, see how to tackle him. So witness a number vandu oru poiya solavikino, during the course of cross examination. The intelligent cross examiner should make, how to make? It is not a formula you should make, otherwise you are unfit to be a a lawyer to defend in a heinous offense. So we should make the witness to lie in the witness box. Oru poiya vayitam na poiyuk solitupiruku, unnoor poiya, rendavudhi poiya. Moonavudhi poiya, nalavudhi poiya, anjaavudhi poiya. Total deviation vaidan the uh fact of fiction aidam. See, how to do this? That is the skill. That is the skill of a uh defense uh council. So oru poiya solnou. Apo rendavudhi aduk use panna weapon. Weapon idhila nadakala, intha gundu, intha measurementla intha opinion prakaran, intha weaponla, intha totala intha bulletla, intha cartridgela, intha injury nadakala, this is a planted weapon. So master witnesses, idhiala may police le vaidundu. Ava police la poi, police, ivunkla plant pannikiranga, oru kitta answer vanganou. Actually, spot vandhirupanga, spot punchama ayirka, spot recovery ayirka. But our spot le sign poturparu, but the way you cross examine. Our court la witness boxla, oru vaile avandunno. Nam police station ku pona. Police station la sign pota. Adu da idu signu. See, this vandu, see, factually punchama was drawn at the spot at the time of recovery of weapon. Which was witnessed by the witness. Who testifies before the court in examination chief that he was actually present. The punchama was drawn between ten o'clock to eleven o'clock. And the place of recovery was shown by the accused, I was present. From this place, he took the weapon and given to the police. Police drawn near punchama, they typed it, avuk vandu oru type printer kondu vandu printer, this allah solranga, this allah narundu, this one man. A cross examination sandarputhla. See, ni ethanamura police station pona. Ethanasign pota, oru avu oru signu pota. Redavudhi murayethini signu pota, rendu signu pota, one vanna, one vanna, one vanna, kaaya nagartin vandutaa. Kachila punchama yeduthkaati, intha signature, ni police station la pota na, missimrise ayi ama an solnou. So ning andu cross examination pannumbodhe, nariya lawyers, including senior lawyers, question bodu vanga. Questione poda dinga. See, you should lead the witness. Avu yesan solnou, noan solnou, don't know an solnou. The way you question any witness. Whether it is an Ivo or eyewitness or punch witness or inquest witness. Any type of witness in the box. The cross examining council should only lead the witness. Never ever allow a witness to explain his circumstance, don't allow it. No explanation. So in the earthla, the cross examination council is should be very, very, very alert. Very, very alert, upon the question vandu. It should be very spontaneous, naan cross examination pannumbodhe, I will never open the file. I will not op file irukka, file kattaukuva mottanana. Apo chief inna, one sixty one statement inna punch witness inna, enda witness. Everything will be on my fingertips. Filea tarukkardhile, avuk vandu yesan solnou, oru question. Erindu question, yes, yes, yes varavirika, bullet shot, noor question, vuyindutairukka. Anindabde, ebde, ekka forty seven la bullet taka, 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 takaan veliyapode. Andamadri bullet shot daan questions. Sometimes yo, inna solupore, ni say yes. If I, if the cross examination council question body, yesan na yesanama. You put a question, tell him don't know, you should say don't know. Don't know, noan sonan, nagan noor questione. This vandu questions alla, eh, the geta, this la blue ink, red ink, black ink. Uh this intha filea talai, this pinala discussion pannu, intha junior hita pese. When I cross examine, none of my colleagues should stand and sit, stand next to me. I'll tell them, sit down, nobody should come near to me. Naan poi witness edhurla, box kitala, nikamada opposite la thanippa. Iduka adukka padanju jadi doora irundala, guddu opposite la thanippa. Yenakka, witnesska, naan intha side nippa, witness andantha side, judges sonnala, uncomfortable here. So the defense counsel should have complete control over the prosecutor. Complete control over the court, complete control over the proceeding. Apo vandu, you should, you should not always tense. You should be witty, you should be jovial, you should cut jokes, you should make the witness laugh. Sometimes you should raise your tone, all these actions are necessary for the benefit of the client who has given you the case, apo cross examination vandu ninga perfectly thorough. Eyewitness, then police. Police inna na role play pannra, F I R register pannra. Apo anga spot ku pona, endandu witnessa meet panna. Apo, see, you should elucidate and answer that before recording the first information report. He had information about the incident, but still he was looking for a favorable witness to lodge first information report. Apo ne vandu, the medicare lapravagana, that is first report, this is second information. This is third information, fourth information. The inspector accepted that the F I R registered in that case was the seventh information. So once you get that answer, then you should conveniently should take an answer that he has suppressed the first six informations. Apo ninga medical C M L sila yar oru admit pannara, M L sila register panna, admit panna, personayavera, lendu eyewitness ni yarmel, apo they are not. Apo cross examination la andu modaltagolari ke first informant kitta answer vangra. See, uh intha kachikarungala vandanga, avuk allam pasi mudiupanni ivu ra poi saachi kudun solranga, F I R oru othukkardhile. Avu, avunnoortra poi kakaarga, avurun othukkardhile, kadasya yallarume ni nirbantham panni, unna F I R register pannusalit, solranga. Intha F I R a dictation kuddhathu vandu kachitalevaru, yedunavurun oru kachitalevaru. Ungittu veru signature vaangananga, signature poodumbodhe. The question, cross examination question should be very, very, very tricky. Apo andh, this la irukkudu unnume thiriadu, unna force pannadhanala, mudiupannadhanala, ni intha F I R la unnu dia kayappatha itta, abhinra, yesan rava. Then it is very, very interesting to cross examine an investigating officer, investigating officer. Nariya vishya oru pannamataru, ellaran sabbadi netkitta vitturparu, then the defense counsel should know, defense counsel should know what are all the lacunas, latches left by the investigating agency to the uh uh in the course of investigating process. Apo endandu vishya vandu punayappattadu, endandu vishya vandu yerkaya irukku, endandu vishya vandu planted vishya, endandu witness vandu real witness. The total circumstance of the case should be taken into consideration while framing the question. And never and ever allow a witness to give explanation. Puniya court la nariyattla pannu voluntary statement in judgy record pannuva, that is wrong. See, no voluntary statement, the answer in the cross examination should be straight. Oru na pannu oru saachi solrare, abhin soli record pannunga, don't allow it, there is no provision in law. Evidence Act facilitating the uh judge to record the testimony of your witness in the name of voluntary statement, witness volunteers, no volunteers, do not allow. In the volunteer pandram madri, first of all, questione vandu preempanakkuada. And we should be steady, yesan naal already, noan naal already, noan, don't know naal already. Up cross examination only to lead the witness, he should say yes, he should. About the cross examination counsel should know which answer should be don't know, which answer should be no, which answer is yes. Yesinra yertla, yes da var no, noanra yertla, no da var no, don't knowanra yertla, don't know da var no. And it requires lots and lots of study. Andh, chella, the checka case la vandu, checka case la vandu accutor indruthu very, very rare. But I never lost a check case appearing for the accused. I always win. Avu vaile varavetpan, indha panam kuddhtranga, kuddhtrutu, panathukana checku de. It is not real. That is the tongue twisting. See, that is how the wit, see witness box la vandhodhe. You should, you should frame question like a bullet. Then you should fall to that question. Apo any case, whether it is uh a three not two case or a cheating case or a bomb blast case or a N I A case or U U P A case. Then the cross examining lawyer should be a single man, army. He should be well acubed in all aspects of law. And before taking, going to the court. Before cross examining the witness, the lawyer should have thorough research. Up to date decisions on that point. Up to date decision uh uh research article on that subject. Suppose samvanartha yertla andh, talai mudi vuyinduruthu. Apram blood deyrdhuthu compare pannkanga, andh blood, andh vacutaina. Adu udia batch number, adu udia coloru. Apo adu edukumbodhu, water all the precautions that the uh doctor should take, engge edukuno. See, collection, preservation and examination. Apo, uboru vishitla, adhe marida vandu digital evidence, collection, preservation and examination. Thorough with collection process, preservation process, blood. Sometimes the connectivity, oru kattiya recover pannkanga, andh kattiya ratthu irukku, andh ratthu ta test panna. Uh andh diseased uh ratthu, andh irukuno. Apo rendu oru group ratthu, see artery blood is different from vein blood. Blood uh of a young is different from blood of your old. Then blood of antimatter blood is different from postmatten blood. Bloodliya one full day cross examination pannala, blood is a bloody blood which connects the accused and the weapon recovered from, that is the basic ground to connect a person. But blood la vandu, two days, three days cross examination pannala. And the investigator, the color of the blood, color changes. First, vandu dark red or bright red, artery blood, veins blood, adhika, apram vandu reddish brown, apram brown, apram brown, apram block, it keep on changes. Our blood na, aduk ethanak judgment irukku, there are all judgments. Okay, almost, I started by seven thirty six, uh the six thirty six. Now the time is seven thirty six, one hour is over. And deliberately, I avoided quoting lot of sections and judgments because all that you can hear uh or read can understand, there are so many two YouTube channels uh which gives lot of inputs on these sections which you can read, I avoided uh those sections. I only concentrated how a defense counsel being a individual is a one man army uh who could be able to or destroy the entire connectivity uh through the skill of cross examination. And finally, you can save. Nowadays, lot of false cases are being framed against the activist, whether it is Dalit activist or a workers activist, minorities, Christian, agricultural liberal. And see, then the defense lawyer uh should be very, very sound, alert, assertive. He must be a research scholar in all branches of law as well as all branches of science, latest technology that would provide complete assertiveness awareness at the time of pass examination. With this, I think I should conclude because I have already taken one hour time. Any questions you can uh you can ask me. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh participants, onukka doubt, inna hand raise panninka, na, oru thangala koopadran, swadukittam madri, ninga kettukkam.
Yes?
Another is there in the audit council?
Sir, that is so, I will have say what we are. Saru, vay siriyakekla?
Sir, touch la, everything
Uh huh.
Everything was that we do, we do, we do.
Yar na, they explain panninga, enik siriyakekla, chunnudhe.
Yes.
See, it's not properly audible.
Another is there, konjungu, vay, uh clear, agala break kaagudhe, once again ninga, kettukkunga.
Sir, pa kettukkala, sir, sir, vannakka, sir.
Ah, ipu kettukke, ipu kettukke.
Sir, box la, yar na, avuka vayala, solop, apriinga, yillaya, epri, sir, kettukke.
Adha naan sonnava, onukka, that is your skill. Ninga, avu unmayana witnessa, poi solrana, abhinruthu oru connection pottuka. Aduk modhile vandu ninga, avu otti study panninna, witness kvara, avu endamariyala. Ethanak police talk witnessa, unmayana witnessa, poi witnessa. Andh samvanarundu arathla, unmayaa irundana, illiya, andh oru connect pottukuna ninga. Avu unmayana witnessan da, onuklu dia skill avu na poi solavikino. Oru poiya avukittundu vayittingila, unnoor question pota, andh oru poiya marikruthu, unnoor poiya solvaa. Unnoor poiya marikruthu, unnoor poiya solvaa, apdya, kondupai, unnoor arathla vittulla avu. This is the skill, ebde solavikirna, adu vandu mandran tandrala, unnukidya.
Sorry, sir.
Eh? No, okay, sir. Amma solaviipu, oru oru kodiruba, panam kuddhathu unma, panam vanganthu unma. Court la witness solrayo, andh kassala settleai beshi, na settleai beshi. Aduk kuddha check, aduk edukka unnu baakiya illa. Andh setlaana ponna checku vechi, ipu case pota, ama da na, ama, abhinna ama.
Sorry, sorry, sir.
Adu ni ebde avu na katra, ebde vay use pannra, andh judge ebde control pannra. The opposite lawyer ebde ni yedukkara, then you need to get an answer. Illa na case tothu padanga.
Amma, 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 sir, amma, sir.
That is the skill.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sir.
Okay.
Okay, 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 sir, thank you, sir.
Sir, triniana sammanas, sir, ninga, elkayinu, sir, anupan.
Sir, vannakka, sir.
Vannakka.
Uh sir, oru case, sir, the case, see madha kettukran, twenty seven recorila, ya.
Ah, twenty seven of Evidence Act.
Ah, avu vandu, oru, aruvala vandu, avu vayipu vandu, uh vettitanga, abdingiruthu cases, sir, vettitanga, na, smka.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay.
Uh police vandu, all our story alla solidde, karshila vandu, vandu, aruvala vandu, oru dattuporla marichu vichirukka, rattha karikbidindha aruvala. Ninga, kut, na, yeduthu daran, abhin soli, andh sol.
Hmm.
Uh, adhoda, andh confession nirdiranga, tirippi vandu, poi, yeduthu, kuddharu, that cheese pannu, abdingiruthu illa, adhela.
Hmm.
Adh, idhina, amag, useful arukkuma, sir, ebde.
For twenty seven of Evidence Act, whatever the confession before the police, which is hit by section twenty five and twenty six of the Evidence Act, Agnu Negasia uh state of Bihar nineteen sixty four, irundu, innigavirinu, alda. If uh twenty seven of the Evidence Act to the uh lifts the ban to the extent of recovery, apo, avu kuttu poi, andh aruval vichirukka, yedutha, kattna. Andh aruvala vandu witnesses, witnesses na uh section one hundred subsection four of the uh criminal procedure court, one hundred subsection five of the criminal procedure court. One sixty five of C R P C, these are all the relevant sections. Andh witness ngah, andh irundu, avuk majdila, andh uh uh rattham thoindu, andh aruvala recovery pannu, andh aruvala recovery pannumbodhe, anga oru parvay maasar, punchama yedu na. Andh punchama la, andh witness ngala sign ponnu. Apo idhla, inna na, vardunaga, idh vandu actually recovery achi na. See, now, nowadays, every police station should have CCTV camera. CCTV camera la record acha. Uh videography pannla, voluntary statement recorder pannruthukku, video uh record pannla. All police station la, adukana, anti cam camera kuddhtrukka, yam pannla. Apo, record pannruthukku munnaadi, uh for, in the uh, one over twenty seven of the Evidence Act. Uh, avu vandu legal assistance kudukunna, avu ethanala arrest pannara. Arrest ayi, ethanala, aanapiru, intha voluntary statement. Inmari, palveru legal provisions irukku. Ah, adh aanapiru, avu kuttu poranga, recovery pannkanga, andh kattiya vandu ratthu irukkuda. Andh ratthu enda coloru, andh kattiiko, intha injuryiko, seriarka, most of the time. Andh aruvala vandu, policekar yedu vichruvanga, adukka, andh injuryko, taliavada. Apo, you have to cross it some in the doctor. Intha injury, intha weaponla, avarudhila, apu weaponani, ninga measurement pannu, injury measurement pannu. What type of injury, adu vandu, katti injurya? Illa stab injurya, illa weapon is double edged weapon or single edged weapon. Uh what is the shape of the injury? Upon the katti aruval, aruvalu, andh injury on disconnect pannu, ninga. So you have to arrest, arrest punchama, alin, angarundu, vandu legal assistance. Apo, intra gate ettinnaalu, inch by inch. Adhla samandappatta Ivo lindu, punch witness lindu, doctor lindu. Color of the blood, whether that was subjected to serology test. Whether that was subjected to DNA examination. Adh, rattho vandu, foudara pochnaka, adh setthadukka, apuravattho, crustia irunda. Ala fibrine andh oru material irukku, ratthatla, adu vandu, apdya, thikka pudiqa, crustine vaanga. Apo, endamadriyana blood, apo, see, ning vandu investigating officer, punch witness, doctor, serologist. Iwlo periyi effective handle panni, andh kattiiko, intha injuryiko, sammanla, it is planted into the, konduvaran, apu ninga solrutha, papa. Non-recovery of the weapon that is inadmissible in evidence. The entire voluntary confession statement cannot be marked, it is inadmissible in evidence. That is hit by section twenty five and twenty six of the Evidence Act. And you will have a better footing than the prosecution. Prosecution failed to connect the weapon with the crime because Prosecution failed to connect the weapon with the crime because there is no recovery, the confession goes off.
Thank you, sir. That is what they are saying. You take it, I will see.
You don't have to say. See, section sixty of the evidence act. The evidence should be direct. If he is recovering, it is inadmissible, you cannot record it. See, confession article twenty, subclass three of constitution. Twenty five and twenty six, that is inadmissible, the evidence record.
Okay, sir. Okay, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Hi, Prajanan. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
It was amazing and very good sessions. We got different aspect for practical knowledge. Thank you so much, sir, because I got a new information like a disconnecting evidence. Because lot of sessions, we had seen the U T classes. But I couldn't find out this word, disconnecting evidence, it's different, sir. Thank you so much. My question is, sir, what, whether, what is the leading question and how must be it?
Leading question is suggesting an answer. Yes, you said, you explained. You explain to the witness, mostly the expert witness fully explain. If you ask a question, he will fill it. Cheaply, if there is a gap, he will fill it. Whether the defense lawyer brings something on record or the prosecution brings something on record. If it is against the connectivity, disconnectivity, then you have to suffer very carefully. You do not admit anything during cross examination. You admit during cross examination, that will go against you. Judge, the defense counsel himself admitted in the cross examination about his presence or about recovery. About this circumstance, he said. The cross examination had no admissions. And so nothing should go against the interest of the accused. Only yes, you are asking a question, only suggest you. Yes, no, don't know. Yes, no, beyond a word. The defense lawyer should be very careful in putting questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Can you give an example for that, sir? Example question.
Example, Caesar Punchnama witness. He said, I went to that place. I signed it, they recovered. You are during cross examination, you are, at night, police station, how many minutes you went? Buy them, how many police stations you went to? Then five, I signed it. Then Punchnama, you only went to the police station. He has to say something. Police station only signed it. Then he going to the spot and recovery Punchnama goes off. Witness was not in the spot. Then in the spot, if you suggest, he will agree. If not, you are there, you say. Your question is of no use.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you so much, sir.
You are a good teacher, you are.
Sir, I practice in Satursa Virudhunaga district.
Because I conducted a case in Thanjavur in the year two thousand eight. A three not two case.
Okay, sir. Okay, sir.
Okay.
Can anybody amalna? Ma'am?
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Sir, your class was very good, sir. Please come back, I would like to see your class.
Thank you.
Sir, you have a question, sir. In the blood, you said a lot of varieties, sir. In the blood color, the colored blood, they are suicidated.
No, 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 no. Blood is there. Suicide blood, how it comes? Murder, stab, blood comes, fire, blood comes. And the age of the blood should be determined. The artery blood, dark red. Vein blood, bright red. Whether it is artery blood or vein blood. Coin blood, white blood, blood, blood. Whether it is a female blood or a mammal blood. So whether, whether it contains fibrine, whether it is foulery or crusty. So blood, there is volumes of questions. Upon the blood, in the incident, what is the connectivity? If the prosecution, how they connect? If the blood, recovery, weapon, weapon, blood. Or shirt, pants, blood. This is blood. Then what is the, who is the group? Who positive, who negative? B group, B positive, B negative? Whether it is a female, you suggest, it's a female blood. Blood, serologist, it's a female blood, the death is male. If not, how can you say? He has not tested. You can say that it's a blood after death. It's a post-mortem blood, it is an ante-mortem blood. Then the age of the blood color changes. First day, red color, red is brown, brown color, black color. Then, what storage blood? Then, I am a serologist. Whether the police station has refrigeration for the blood, in the temperature store. So each and every point from the time of collection, preservation, then examination. Every aspect should be questioned. Like DNA, blood. See, DNA matching, it is, it is, the myth is created that DNA examination is absolute. But the collection, vacutainer, batch number, preserved, everything the defense lawyer should know. So blood is very, very significant connecting material of a crime which the defense lawyer could able to destroy.
Okay, sir. Then another question, sir. You have eaten poison. Poison is painful, it is possible. In the ear, you have a crack. If there is nothing, it is possible to eat poison.
There are so many poisons. You signed, you will die. First, you should know what type of poison. And what is the ingredient in that poison? What is the manufacturing of that poison? Reaction in the body, each poison, you know. Then, you test the poison. What is the content of the poison? So that is what I said, see, the lawyer should be a scientist, lawyer should be investigator. Lawyer should do research. It is very research work. That is why, thoroughly. Then what can we do? An expert can give an opinion. Buy the books. Study it, judge it. So you should spend a lot of time on reading when you take up your case. Whether it is a poisoning case or a gunshot case or a stabbing case or hanging case. Each and every case you should make thorough research. So lawyer, cross examination, research, it's not an art. That is a art.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. But this is my mom's case. They all died, they closed the case. But I have a lot of doubts.
Doubts? The poison, the cause of the poison. The doctor said. Poison, what is poison? In the house, poison is there. Then someone, a person, how to poison? Is there a struggle? Or they are eating in the food. Then, he ate at night, where he ate? See, a person is dead, death is due to poisoning. Poison is suicidal. Accidental, homicide. Murder, kill, murder. Three reasons. Then, the meat is unnatural. Then, it is unnatural death. Then, suicide is the cause. So what is the circumstance to indicate it is a suicidal death? If it is not suicidal, whether it is accidental. If it is accidental. Whether it is accidental, or accidental, it is not good. Then homicide, who knows? Coffee, tea, or water. Sometimes drinks. So in the circumstance, he is there. Today, his activity, he has a mobile phone. Who is there, his enemy? See, if it is a homicide, who is the motive? He is the one who is trying to kill. He tried to kill, what is the reason? We should analyze it. Then if you get all the clue, if you still feel it is a homicide. Then you can longer report, you can private complain. Or go to high court, petition. For a direction to the police to register, local police. Specialized C B C I D investigate. If you do, you know. Or natural death, unnatural death, what is the cause of unnatural death? Then you try.
Okay, sir. If you have doubts, you can call me.
Okay, okay, but not repeatedly. Evening, between five thirty to six thirty, phone.
Okay, sir. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Sir, I have a phone number.
Phone number, Rajesh, nine double four. Nine double four eight zero four eight one three one, your name is Balan.
Sir, nine double four?
Eight zero.
Eight zero.
Four eight one three one.
Four eight.
Three one. I can speak Tamil.
Super, sir.
Excellent, sir.
Stage talking. Sir, good evening.
Good evening.
Sir, I know your story. A strange person. When you talk, you don't speak in English. A strange person. We will talk more, sir. We are watching you on the stage.
Thank you, Makaika stage. Makaladika, Makaika stage.
We are meeting. Many of your speeches are inspiring. Many of your speeches, all your speeches are beautiful, sir. Do you know YouTube? I saw you. You are speaking Tamil.
I am from Bengaluru.
That is not, how is it Tamil?
Correct, correct. Tamil is the best.
Okay, sir.
Bengaluru is the best.
I know, sir. You are a good speaker.
Okay, it's a class, not a speech.
No, it's super. Whenever you are talking, it is good. It is different. You are talking about other things. You are talking about world history. When you talk, it is good. All of them. All of them, you watch, you learn.
Then one hour, what can I do?
That is, it is a good speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Sir, I have a doubt. CCTV camera, some records, smartphones, some records. Crime. In the same cases, what is the difference?
CCTV camera. CCTV camera. Whenever you are in the house, office, publicly, CCTV camera fixed. How many cameras are there? How many cameras, in what place installed? Then, this monitor, monitor, DVR connection. DVR, hard disk, that is storage. Then, a house has five thirty minutes. The DVR, how many minutes is there? Set the time. Then study. Then, if you take it. CD, you take it. The CD, hash value, it is a number, number. Hash value, then, hard disk, HD, hash value. Who is taking it? Then, whether it was subjected to expert opinion under section forty five year of the evidence act and examined by a notified examiner as provided under section seventy nine capital Y of the IT Act, Information Technology Act. Then, the defense lawyer, the clone image or mirror image of the hard disk provide. That is the hash value. Then, marking, grabbing. What loopholes? The house is running, the record is correct. In the sixty five B certificate, whether it is as per sixty five two. Whether it is as per sixty five B four of the evidence act. That is the next forty five year complaint. That is completely a research work. The research, study, then DVR recovered. Who is the punch witness? What is the witness examination? Then, how is the packing? Then, how is the transportation? I went to the expert, preserved. So there are volumes of research work on that. Did you do all that? How is the top? The same way, the top is running. The top is taken, a single building. Then, you take it. If you take it, it is easy to penetrate. Then, the expert. The police don't know. The police, you ask the question, they will answer. Then, the expert, volumes of question, ask them. You should shake him in the box. Then, your position, your style, your voice. Your question, rhythm. Rhythm, all of them, in the court. In a way, you are a fear psychosis. You are standing, big. You have a look, your eyes, your eyes, your eyes, connection.
If you have a court. If you have a court permission. If you cross, we will follow.
Tamil advocating, Madurai advocating, we are watching you in Bengaluru. If I cross, Bengaluru, the court will jump.
We will come soon, sir. Then, two more questions. Thank you, sir. Two more questions, sir. Hanging, I am hanging. Many people are hanging, on the roof.
Suicide hanging, or homicidal hanging. Accidental hanging, three ways of hanging. Then, hard bone, a bone. If you stangle it, it will break. If you poke it, it will not break. Then, whether there is any struggle before the death. Then, the injury, ligature mark. Ligature, poke it. The hand, rope, the cord, the mark. Then, it is very easy to ascertain whether it is a suicidal hanging or homicidal hanging. The doctors say. If you have a color. Then, you are wrong. Suicide hanging, what is the injury? The throat, the hanging stage, all of them. It is altogether different. Then, if the accident, suicide. call mutti put ring and I don't know and and the ligature material the hanging material I don't know the loser China and the body wait to take together clear you so but Tony dear bang every tight rope in hanging I Tony dear bang I do a pretty mutti put it also depends upon the hanging material if a took or angle and that la party not Tony get there can mutti I don't know my set and and the hanging Kairi come the and the G all am and the rope a test and I don't have Tony get there can mutti and the key item me mutti
okay bring sir last one question sir last in theory
hmm last scene circumstance last seen circumstantial Kadesia even a road a path it is older the are or witness and the witness and that la part are Epi part are our poor and I'm a marines she or and the car and the earth the poor and I was here and our the location and in cha or fight the cell phone in the and the tower temple a dig see and the la CCTV footage in the way like[878.76]